Tuesday, 6th June 2017 at 7:03 PM. And I'd like to call the order, the North Hudson Village Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. And in lieu of invocation, I would like to take 30 seconds of silence to think about the folks that were involved in this being the 73rd anniversary of D-Day for the soldiers, Marines, airborne that were involved in that operation. Just a side note, it started early morning and by evening, 155,000 US, Canadian, French, and English troops had landed on that beach in Normandy. Many of them died getting out of their boats. So I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember the folks that sacrificed for our country. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hen?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Hey?
Here.
Trustee Zace?
Here.
Max?
Sit here.
Zappa?
Here.
Are you here?
He's here.
Okay, thank you. Item two is reviewed in approved minutes from the Regular Board Meeting from 2 May 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any corrections or amendments to the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approval signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Comments from the floor? Not sure why the chief is here, so just part of the... Oh, maybe for later.
We invited him.
Yeah, we invited him for the closed session and stuff. Yeah.
You just got off the river, so sorry.
No, that's... I'm sorry. No, you're fine. I just wondered where comments were coming from. Seeing none, everybody's on the agenda. Resolution 2017-04, Department of Natural Resources Review of Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, C-MAR. Approval requested.
Stan, can I move approval of resolution number 2017-04?
Thank you.
I'll second, Stan.
Do we need to read the resolution, Terry?
You don't need to read the whole thing as long as you've clearly identified it.
Okay. And this is a report that we do annually, so I don't think we need to read the whole thing. So this is a resolution number, so Kirk?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item five, Resolution 2017-05, Support of the Little Falls Dam Project. And I will read this resolution just because we have committed, as with our other communities around Willow River State Park and the dam that affects many of us in the park area. This is the Board of Trustees, Village of North Hudson, Wisconsin, that this meeting held this 6th day of June 2017 hereby adopts the following resolution. Whereas the Village of North Hudson, St. Croix County, is interested in protecting and enhancing Willow River State Park and seeing it continue as a prime tourist attraction. Whereas the Village of North Hudson benefits from tourism brought to the village due to the Willow River State Park. And whereas the Village of North Hudson believes that replacing the dam on the Willow River within the Willow River State Park enhances the attractiveness of the park. And whereas the Village of North Hudson supports the state-level budgeting to rebuild the Little Falls Dam. And whereas the Village of North Hudson encourages all elected officials to vote in favor of this budget item. And therefore be it resolved that the Village of North Hudson, Wisconsin respectfully request that Little Falls Lake Dam on the Willow River within the Willow River State Park be rebuilt in a budget passed to support its reconstruction. That all elected officials vote in the affirmative in support of the budget for its construction dated this 6th day of June 2017. And it's a resolution, so we'll start with Kathy.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Stan, the fire contract is not on one of the closed session items, it's just on one of the open session items, 14A and B. Just as a suggestion, since they're here, could we move that item up on the agenda perhaps if no one has any objections?
Ah, yeah, I got no problem with that. So...
Do you want us to have any objections to moving 14B up?
Okay. Okay, can I... But the Finance Committee did meet and have recommended that the fire contract and funding options be approved. If there would be a motion to push this to the full board, it would be appreciated.
Stan, I move to approve the 2017 fire contract and authorize Village Treasurer to issue the first payment of $43,418 to the City of Hudson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Discussion? Since the chief is here, now is the time, if we have any questions for him.
Does anybody have any questions? You know, he did a very nice job explaining the whole situation. I suppose Stan explained it to you during the finance meeting, but if anybody has any questions about, you know, the fire ladder truck or anything, other things, you know, this is a good opportunity.
Yeah, I mean...
Scott, come up to the... Get your smiling face on TV.
And just a little bit of an update, why I was a little bit late. Unfortunately, we had a near drowning and a drowning on the end of the dike just now, so we just cleared. So, kind of sad news, but so that's kind of where we were. So, with that being said, if there's any questions at all about the truck or operations or anything, I mean, we... Stan comes to our advisory board meetings and we try to keep him updated as much as we can on what's happening with the fire department. We try to meet quarterly. Hopefully, he has information for you and passes it on, but, you know, I'm willing to come and answer questions as I can as they come up. I know this is some big-ticket items, we've discussed it, and I guess if there's any solace, I'm doing everything I can to try to get the best deal that we can for this truck and try to maybe do some packaging that. So we're working very diligently. We're not just going out and paying list price and we're doing it. So we're... A lot of the salespeople aren't real happy with me right now because I'm trying to get the most we can, so we're working on it. As far as the rest of the equipment, really part of our job is to kind of continue to make sure we are in compliance with NFPA and that too. So in the past, sometimes if there's a little bit of lag time, we have a little catch-up, and I think we're looking pretty good for the future now. I don't know if there's any questions about operations or anything else. One thing that was brought up was the ladder truck, do we need it? Well, yeah, we do. And a big part of it is, is we use it on single-family fires, we use it everywhere. And another part is ISO, the insurance ratings require having access to that. And if you don't, what it does, it affects your ratings. So it's a piece of equipment we really do need, we use it. It's like everything else, you kind of holistically need all those pieces to make a department. And we, from representing, you know, the city to the business district, to North Hudson, to your warehouse district, to out in the township, it requires us to have tenders and different things, but everyone has use of it and we can use it in all parts of our service area, so.
Well, the ISO thing would be, you know, I mean, that affects people is your homeowners...
Insurance ratings, yes. So they're guided by a lot of things, they come in and rate us, and so that does what you have service to meets it. But we need it. We need it for, you know, like I said, we utilize it a lot. And the existing one is 31 years old, so it's definitely past its service life. NFPA recommendations are 10 years frontline, 20 years reserve. So according to NFPA, we're 11 years past reserve status. So we're, you know, by those guidelines, we're well beyond. And they go strictly by age, not by miles, hours, you know, it's the age with, you know, and some of this technology and stuff too. So, and it's getting to the point now where the next big break or something probably can't be replaced, and I think we're better positioned now to negotiate for one than to have to buy one, so.
Any questions from the board?
Pardon me, Chief, what's your timeline in purchasing this truck again?
We're looking at, hopefully, I'd hope to order it now, but we're... I'm working on some kind of alternative plans to see if we can make something work, but I'd like to by the end of the month or July order it. And yours, it's about a year out to get it, so.
A year, yeah.
And as far as purchasing, there's many variables as far as how you pay too, so there's some deductions for prepay, and a lot of it has to do with the different manufacturers. Some are very aggressive with prepay discounts, others aren't. So that, we take that all into play, but so as far as when the money's actually spent depends on that, and some are half down, so. But delivery date, unless something would come up, is probably a year from now, we're looking at next June or July.
So when a resident asks me why we're paying for it and you own it, what do I tell them?
I would say under the current situation is you contract with us the way it's drawn up. I'm not backfilling, but I don't deal with the contract portion. I'm happy to get involved if they wouldn't, if they would let me, but so right now you're paying, you're contracting with the City of Hudson, we are the fire agency. But I believe we've had some healthy discussions with your attorney and Mr. Weckin at the last meeting about looking possibly and talking with, I think, the mayor and some of the council members about is there alternatives or not? But that's, it's been passed along, and I believe those discussions are going to take place. So as of now, you're under contract with us to provide the services, the way I understand it, so.
Terry?
I don't have any comments other than that. I mean, in answer to Brian's, this is just the way the contract's been for 20 years, and there are other models that other municipalities do use, but it's the one we're under. And we are under a contract, even though we haven't signed the 2017 one, we are under the 2016 one, which in some ways is worse for the village than the 2017 one, because at least we've gotten it amended. If we did want to change, we wouldn't be stuck paying for something we don't use once we're out of the fire, Hudson Fire District, so.
So if we do opt out, you're saying we don't keep paying for the truck?
We would have to give a five-year notice, and we would keep paying for the five years, but we wouldn't have to keep paying if the loan were a 20-year loan, we wouldn't have to pay for 20 years. We'd only have to pay for the years that we were still in the contract.
Is it a 20-year loan?
I don't think that's been determined yet, how we're going to pay for it.
I think it's 15, isn't it?
It what?
15.
I believe the bonds were for 15 years.
Okay, then maybe it has.
And I'm not sure exactly.
15 with the bond that Hudson has, and right now, juggling our finances, the bond is our most economical way to go.
Yeah, we discussed at length options, and of course, it's my feeling that working together as a cooperative, as we have been, is beneficial for everybody. So, but moving forward, of course, there is the contract, there's always that five years where you do have the option of, you know, opting out. We would definitely prefer not to do that and hopefully look forward to try and work together and at least getting your voice heard within the mayor and the city council moving forward of what your concerns are.
Anything else?
So our motion is on basically renewing the contract for 2017 going forward.
With an amendment.
With an amendment, yep. Okay.
Okay, so that's the contract and the spending issues, so is Kirk's turn first?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Scott.
You know, I should kind of, I should maybe spoke a little more about, you know, the fire is one part, we also perform the inspections, and then also we, you know, like recently have been assisting with, you know, lifting and different things within your city too. So we do do a lot of other, besides that, we, you know, like I said, and part of our 2% due is for you to collect them. There's multiple things that need to be hit on those in order to be eligible for those 2% dues, so it's not only the fire part of it, it's, there's multiple other portions that need to be addressed, and we do. And one of the big ones is the fire inspections, and I think we're, we work closely with the city on a few of them and spend quite a bit of time on a few residents here that, you know, and we look forward to it. And if there's any other thing we can do or whatever, feel free to get my phone and emails in there, so if you have any questions, anytime, I'd love to talk to you about it.
Yeah, no, I have no problem, you know, getting the whole of you, you've been very accessible, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate you coming up.
Oh, at any time, like I said, so. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Okay, now back to...
We finished five, I think.
Yep, we're at number six is the adoption ordinance 03.217. We're going to table that, discussion with our administrator clerk that there's a number or section change or something with that, so we'll, and it doesn't have to pass today, it's a, and it's, Hudson changed their rates on water, which was approved by the PSC, and so we're, we'll...
This was actually on the sewer rate that changed.
The sewer, yeah, well, water affects the sewer rate, that's how they charge. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, they, well, my understanding, so, and I, we won't pick on Kip yet, save him for later. So we'll put that off to next month, and it doesn't affect us paying or not paying for anything, so that's, we can move that one off.
Stan, a question on that service rate thing. Can I ask a question?
Well, you can ask a question, but we can move it to next month, I mean...
Okay, well, the only thing I wanted to bring up is that we are working on that 47-page document still, and it mentions...
That's part of the reason for...
That's why we're putting it off. Okay, just wanted to be sure. Thanks.
Yeah, okay. Item seven is 2017-2018, Class A-B Alcohol Beverage Licenses, Cigarette Licenses, Amusement Permits, An Approval Requested, something, there we go, so.
Stan, can I move to approve the Class A Ferment-in-Mouth Beverages and Parent Class A Parent, or, this is going to get mixed up, Intoxicating Liquor License for TK Interest, Inc., DBA Village Liquor Store, Kimberly White, Agent, with an effective date of July 1st 2017 through June 30th 2018 as recommended by the Village Clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations of the Village to be satisfied.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a second?
Second.
Can we, can we pass the rules and approve these all in one shot?
You can. We'd have to word the... Does anybody have any objections to any of these licenses whatsoever?
No.
None.
Any red flags or anything? I think you could, if you wanted to, Stan, have a motion that approved all of the licenses on the memo from Melissa, you know, as long as you identify what you're doing.
I'm the head of it.
Chief, you went through all these? Do you...
Yes, there was a memo.
It's on the...
Yeah, it's right, it's attached.
Chief has a memo as well, yep. But I think the motion would have to cover all of the motions that Melissa has suggested on her memo, so that's what you'd want to do, is just have a motion to approve all of the license as listed on the June 6, 2017 memo, which is our item number seven on our agenda. Somebody could just move that.
I'll move to approve all the license renewals on our agenda this evening, alcohol, tobacco, and coin-operated licenses.
As attached.
As attached.
And then Melissa, you should include that in the minutes, permanent record. Yeah, okay. Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any discussion or questions?
Kirk recuses himself from all of the licenses to the cozy corner. Perfect. Don't you, Kirk.
I accept.
All right, so motion made and second, are there questions or comments? Hearing none, Kathy?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. That skipped a lot of wheres and parent As and parent Bs, yeah.
Tough read.
Yeah, they are.
That's why I let you do it.
So we have...
Terry, you just earned your money.
Oh, good.
Okay, the item number eight, 2017-2018 Fireworks Permit Application of Mark Zappa of Exit 1, Fireworks Approval Requested.
So Stan, I would move to approve the application for fireworks paraphernalia license, temporary use permit for Mark Zappa with the following conclusions. No smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under 18 years of age, operation not to exceed 180 days per calendar year.
Thank you, Ted.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Is there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I abstain. I abstain, Stan.
Abstain. Okay, item nine, amended Class Parent B slash Parent Class B Liquor License for Extended Premises, Cozy Corner Relay-for-Life Fundraiser, Wednesday 7 of June, tomorrow night, that is, approval requested.
I'll move approval, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any questions or comments?
Should we read the conditions, Terry, or just let it go?
Again, as long as what you're doing is clearly identified, so...
Let me read the conditions real quick. We're allowing it, number one, these are pretty much boilerplate, we do all the time. Area outside a building completely enclosed with a fence and the extended premises accessed only from within the building. Two, use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced in area per the establishment liquor license. Use the outside area only with specific permission of Village Board for requested date and times. Four, owner to provide an equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking, well parking lot areas fenced during time of event. Five, owner to be responsible band slash music volume. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Kathy was the second, correct?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? All in favor of the amended Class B for Cozy Corners for the Relay-for-Life Fundraiser tomorrow night, June 7th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I accuse myself for that one, Stan.
Thank you, Kirk. Okay, and item 10 is amended Class Parent B slash Parent Class B Liquor License for the Extended Premises, Seasons Tavern, Saturday, August 19, 2017. This is a Pepper Festival-related item that will be coming up in a couple months for everybody to put on their calendars.
Stan, can I move approval? May I move approval?
Yes, you may. Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there any questions or comments?
So the motion includes the times and all of the conditions as per the...
I'll read the conditions for this too.
Yep.
Area outside a building to be completely enclosed with fence and the extended premises accessed only from a single access point. Two, use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced in area per the establishment liquor license. Three, use of outside area only with specific permission of the Village Board for requested date and time. Four, owner to provide an equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking, well parking lot areas fenced during time of event. Five, owner to be responsible for DJ slash music. Six, all outside music, 10, no later than 10 PM.
Thank you, Mark.
I kind of think it's important to read the conditions so everybody knows what we're treating.
Well, that's, everybody, you know, and we've been pretty consistent over the years.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it is important for people just tuning in.
Yep.
We have new residents and stuff just moved to the village, you know, that helps them understand what we have going on.
No reflection on anybody.
All in favor of the amended Class B for Seasons Tavern, Pepper Festival Event, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 11 is rescheduled July Village Board Meeting due to Independence Day holiday. Fourth of July falls on the first Tuesday of the month, and so we would like to know your calendars, we would like to move this to June...
27.
27?
Moving it up a week.
Moving it up a week. Get it back a week.
You back from China then, Ted?
Um, yes, barely.
So I mean, you have jet lag?
I have big jet lag.
It's like every day.
It's like every day.
All right, I'll just look to everybody.
Works.
Okay, do we have a motion in there? Okay, so the July Board Meeting will be 27th of June, and Finance as well, so thank you, everyone, for checking your calendars. Okay, new business from the board or staff. And first on the agenda is President's comments, and first thing, what I had is I want to wish all the fathers, Happy Father's Day coming up in a couple of weeks, and I hope you have a safe and wonderful Father's Day. And then I need to make a statement, the City of Hudson, as most everyone is aware, the St. Croix EMS, they're in negotiations with a possible sale or transfer of St. Croix EMS to Health Partners, Lakeview Hospital of Stillwater. And there was a couple of statements made last night in the city council meeting that I think needs addressing. And speaking for the Village of North Hudson, I would like to clarify what the village is asking regarding the allocation of cost for EMS services is a more fair and equitable way for all involved and would not be pushing our costs back onto the City of Hudson, as was made, the statement was made last night. It in fact would require the city to more closely pay for the amount of services that they're actually using, and it would stop it from being pushed back on the other communities. Presently, the City of Hudson uses 71% of the services and are paying 50% of the cost, and that's what we've tried to get across, and I don't understand their misconception that we were trying to push our costs back. Right now, we use about 9% of the services, and we're paying 14%. So, I mean, also, you know, I mean, we're at the top of our levy cap, and we need, what we're asking for is it to be a little more fair, and it could be wonderful, you know, that the city is maintaining a self-imposed levy limit, it just doesn't justify other communities paying for the city's growth and the use of the majority of services. If our communities were more comparable in size and characteristics, then per capita would be an appropriate way to allocate cost. What makes this inequitable is not purely because of the allocation being per capita only, but because the rate per capita is being driven up by the cities of Hudson's growth and the additional demand on the EMS services. The village, on the other hand, has not had an increase in population or demand and doesn't look like much of one, except for a project that we have going on will help us with a little bit of growing, but it's just, we're just trying to, you know, it's, you know, to be fair to the, you know, the partner communities, and I just wanted to clarify that, you know, we're not trying to push our costs, you know, we've been paying our fair share plus. So I would just like to, you know, make, you know, I hope the city or anybody watching this, you know, and I'm sure they will, that, you know, that's, our intention is not to get out of paying. We like St. Croix EMS, you know, I mean, we're very happy with the services we get there, and we just wish that they would, you know, you know, maybe pay their fair share. So with that, I'll go to Gloria, or no, actually Administrator, Melissa, I'm sorry. We're in transition.
You have two of them right now. Nothing for me.
Okay.
I just wanted to let the board know that you'll find in your mailbox a copy of the 2016 audit, final audit, so please pick up your copy and enjoy.
Did we do good in the audit?
Of course.
And thank you very much to, you know, you have all three of you for your hard work in that, and that is, it's, since I've been doing this, every year we've had a great audit report, so thank you very much. Plan Commission Recommendation, this is Chair Update. Kevin, you want to step up for the Chair Update, or do you want Terry to do that, or?
All right, Kirk. All right, a couple of things. Plan Commission met last month, and the biggest topic was the Artisan North, new sub...
is the Artisan North new subdivision that's proposed off Bluebird Court, the Burnley property. There's eight lots that are proposed down there, they range from a third to an acre up to three quarters of an acre. We did have a public hearing, did have quite a few residents at that meeting, kind of a standing room only. They had a lot of concerns, some of the things was with traffic, you know, the steep slope on the back of the, where the subdivision would be, erosion, storm water management, we talked about, water main looping, sewer service, as you can see, there was some minutes that were provided, quite a bit of discussion back and forth between the developer and their engineer along with our comments, but in the outcome, they did recommend for approval. This is just the preliminary plat process, they will have to come back with the final plat, and along with the preliminary plat, since there is going to be public improvements that are involved, we would need to have a developers agreement, which you do have a copy of that, you know, letter of credit, for some reason, if the developer was to not be able to complete the project, you would still have that to fall back on to, to finish all those, part of it, the sewer, the water, the street, storm sewer, all those particular things, that's usually about 125% of what the estimated improvement costs are, and then you have, you know, a warranty period, that's two years from the date the village does accept the improvements. There's, you know, exhibits with the construction plans, what's been reviewed and approved, just a lot of different things that are, you know, we're looking at incorporating in the, in the developers agreement. And, you know, once this does go into effect, that basically gives them the go-ahead to actually start the project. So, I can, you know, if you want to get into any questions...
Who's tracking the developers agreement?
That would be something between, you know, the village, myself, and the village attorney.
You're tracking it?
Well, I develop, I wrote it, I mean, I didn't write it from scratch, we have some standard templates we use, but, but I wrote it, I sent it to their attorney who reviewed it, and he had one change that made a lot of sense to me anyway, because normally we try to require the developers, once they've graded a lot, to mow it, keep it, you know, from getting overgrown, but in this case, they're just going to leave lots in their natural state, which is probably a better bet than making them, cut down all the trees and put blank grass to mow it, so, so that was the only change, everything else is in good shape, they pay all the village's expenses, the attorney's fees, the engineer's fees, and they have to provide us with financial assurance in case he goes broke and abandons the project and we got a half-finished road that the taxpayers don't have to pay for it.
So, who is making sure that the developers agreement...
Mostly Kevin would do that on a step-by-step basis, it did the road get built or not, those sorts of things.
So, basically, so basically, we'll have an onsite inspector when all the public improvements actually do get installed, there is provisions in there.
You have a checklist?
Well, we, I mean, there'll be construction specifications that are actually incorporated to review, I mean, city Hudson has there...
I just want to know that you're making sure that everything that's in the agreement's being followed.
Yes.
And by the dates, et cetera.
Yep.
And you'll let us know if it's, if there's a...
So, what's the first date, October 17 for public improvements?
Everything would need to be...
Is it?
Yeah, everything that's written in the developers agreement is, except the final lift of asphalt is October 1st of this year.
Mark, yeah? Identify yourself, please.
Derek, I don't want another Derek thing.
I'm Mark Erickson with Land State Companies, and we have purchased a Burnley property and are doing the R's in North Development. We want to have the completion, all of the improvements completed by no later than the end of August, so that's what our schedule is. October 1 is kind of our drop dead date in the developers agreement, but we want to get everything done by the end of August, so that's, that's what our goal is.
It's everything.
Except the final lift of asphalt.
Well, and not all eight houses will be built.
Don't.
Public improvements.
Public improvements.
Yeah, I get it.
I think it's one of the things we expressed in the public works meeting, just that we'd have a status of the project itself and come back to our public works meeting and let us know where it's at, that's all.
No question about it.
Yeah.
I live right, right next door, so that's not a problem. Any other questions for me at this time?
No, we don't have anything actionable, I mean, it's, you know, they're...
We'd like you to approve the developers agreement.
Developers agreement? Okay. All right.
I'll move to approve. And the preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat.
And the preliminary plat, actually, we do have two actions, yeah.
And the preliminary, I'll move to approve the developers agreement and the preliminary plat for Artesian North, or whatever it's called.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions or comments while Mark's still here? Oh, we wish you success, you know, I mean...
All in favor?
Yeah. Well, all in favor, yeah, I mean, all in favor of the approvals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll wish you success.
Well, thanks much, we're happy to be here, thanks for your help.
14, Personal Finance Committee, Personnel Finance Committee Recommendations Claims, approval requested.
Number...
14A.
14A.
Is there a motion?
Yes, is it right here?
I move to approve the June 2017 non-recurring claims of $64,976.12.
Thank you, Kathy, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Is there discussion, questions about the non-recurring, or the recurring claims? Hearing none, finance question, Kirk?
Yes.
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 Thank you, and we did item B in the fire contracts, that's all. Item 15, Public Works Committee Recommendations, Chair Update, Brian?
Stan, the committee did meet and we have one item to bring forward, the sale of 1998 International with Plow and Sander, and we move to approve the sale of 1998 DT 466E 4700 International Truck with Plow and Sander, and the village administrator to put out in the paper accepting bids with a minimum bid of 8,500.
Second.
Thank you, is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, the sale of an asset, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. 16, Public Safety Committee Chair Update, Mark?
We have no action items, Stan.
Okay, thank you. Public Welfare Committee Recommendations, Kirk?
Yeah, well, we went through the parking ordinance and stuff like that, so we do have one motion.
Okay.
Our motion's to approve the village attorney to draft an ordinance regarding residence for vehicle and storage parking. Oh, is that not on the agenda? Oh, my bad, oh, we haven't even, I'm sorry.
Just as an update to that, though, we, yeah, we have drafted that, and I think Justin got a draft back to Melissa.
He needs to fix one thing.
So, that'll go back to your committee again.
Okay.
But can, if they, if he looks at it and is what they are looking for, can it go right to board instead of going back to public?
It could go right back to the board, yep. Yeah, that's not an ordinance that requires going to committee or having a public hearing or anything.
Okay, and there was nothing actionable with long-term camping or...
Nope.
Okay, all right, so, then to that, Park Board Committee, Kirk?
We didn't meet.
Okay, and now...
Well, unless, sorry. Well, yeah, we met, we met Thursday, we did meet Thursday, it's not on my agenda, that's where I don't get where this is coming from.
Well, I just...
Yeah, my business.
I don't have an eighteen.
Okay, so there's no actionable items from Park Board?
Oh, the update, um, oh, I want to think, one second, no, we just met up, we realigned the parks and which one everyone's in charge of, but there was no motions for anything.
Okay. All righty then, item 19, convene into closed session, and we need motions to do that.
Someone...
We do, Stan, but the president does need to sadly read all of those.
Oh, okay, no, I'm perfectly good with that. All right, one at a time, or can we bullet through, or make a motion on each of them?
We can, we can make one motion on all, well, no, actually, because any board member might be able to object to any one of them if they don't want to go into closed session, we should do them one at a time.
Okay, we will do that. The board may convene into closed session pursuant to statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties and investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to water and sewer utility feasibility study and the possibility of combining all water and sewer system components with the city of Hudson Water and Sewer Utility or renegotiating the current agreements and...
I missed that one part, Stan, could you start over about halfway?
What's that? Certainly, no, I'm going to get a hearing, Terry, we're going to get sharing here.
I'll move approval of that one.
You make, move approval, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy.
Roll call.
And roll call, Kathy?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, and then B, the board may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent lowercase e, for the purpose of delivering and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to an offer on the property at 712 Pines Street North.
I'll move approval, Stan.
Thank you, Mark, second?
Second.
I don't know who's first, we'll give that one to Kathy too, I edged out Brian by his nose. Okay, Kirk?
Yes.
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 Thank you, and C, the board may convene into closed session pursuant to statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to the possible purchase of the municipal garage from GMT, LLP, and authorization for the village administrator to solicit loans. Is there...
Salute.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim, and, let's see, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
I abstain.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, so we are now in closed session, so Kevin, thank you very much.